We're going to get into a number of Cooper City issues here very quickly. I want to start by asking Jeremy Katzman, Jeremy, as you know, as Joshua knows, the city of Cooper City spent time and taxpayer money and resources to try to keep Joshua off the ballot unsuccessfully. So I want to ask you about the city's strategy. What's your opinion of the city's legal strategy in his case?
Well, I think the issue was clear. The charter and the code of ordinances require the city to pursue the action for declaratory relief in the court. As far as I'm concerned, the judge made an order and the issue is resolved.
Did the judge rule the right way?
I had no involvement in the case and I leave it up to the court system to make the decision.
Okay. For the benefit of Cooper City residents and non-residents not familiar with the situation, and Joshua, please clarify and correct anything I've mischaracterized here. The city, like all cities, was required to go through a redistricting process. And so the boundaries of the four city commission districts were changed. There's a provision in the charter that says you have to be a legal resident of the district you're running in for one year prior to qualifying is the way I read it. And so this could, among other things, this could wreak havoc on anyone's interest in running for public office because no one, other than the people in city government, no one knows exactly how those districts are going to be realigned. So have I summarized essentially what happened here?
Yeah, that is all accurate.
And so what's your opinion about this litigation and about the way things ended up here?
I think the right outcome was reached. I do think it was an attempt by the commission to choose a commissioner. Considering if you took a literal reading of the statute, which is what the commission argued for, it would actually precluded both of us from running, but the city only pursued one of us to try to exclude one of us. So I think it's clear that the commission wanted to pick who they wanted to have fill the next seat. And fortunately, the judge felt that that wasn't appropriate.
Yeah, elaborate on that for me for us if you wouldn't mind. Why was, why was Mr. Katzman also affected here?
Because a literal reading of the statute required residency in the district for one year. And because the district changed, no one in NBC Lakes technically was in the district for a year. If you backdated, you could say that they lived in what is now the district for a year, but on the date of, that was probably just like of June 13th. If you go back to June 13th of 2021, both Jeremy and I were residents of District Four, not District One.
So you're saying this was a poorly worded ordinance from the get-go is what you're...
So the charter doesn't define residency, but in fairness to Cooper City, no city does. I think we both should have been allowed in without a court case. But it is widely agreed that's only Jeremy's situation would have been allowed. But the commission argued for a literal reading of the statute, which would have actually excluded Jeremy also. But they only chose to investigate one of us.
So may I respond?
Sure.
Number one, I've lived in the same house since July of 2014. So my house has not moved. I have not changed my residence.
Your house hasn't moved, but the district lines moved, right?
Correct. But my point is that I have lived in the region or in the geographic area where the district existed prior and I currently live in that district. I did not move during this period of time. I did not move after the redistricting process. However, I am not arguing in that case. What I'm saying is let's move on and let's have a race here. I think that the residents care more about the issues that relate to Cooper City than they do about a redistricting process that only a few have been following.
Okay. Fair enough. Well said. Why is this seat, Jeremy Katzman, why is this seat open?
Well, as a result of the redistricting process, it changed the districts. And the commissioner who serves in the District One seat decided not to run for reelection and actually is supporting my race.
Yeah, who is that?
Massimo Max Polcini.
Right. I do have one more question about this redistricting saga though. I just want to clarify something and I'll ask you Joshua, Giancarlo. I read, I read the litigation, I read the lawsuits, I read the appeal, I've read the exhibits over the weekend. Who's the complainant in this case? And how did that complainant come to be?
So technically, the complainant is the city clerk of Cooper City. It came to be after I was qualified and told I could run later that week. The city clerk had reached out and said, hey, we're actually not going to qualify you. Some conversation took place that day. She changed her mind and then qualified me again. And then city commissioners got involved and were pressuring the city manager and city clerk to file suit to try and get me excluded. At which point, the city manager and the city attorney had reached out to me the following week and explained the situation. And I told them, I look, I understand your positions. It's the city clerk who has to file, not the commissioners. But since it is an issue that can be clarified, I told them file suit. But the pressure, I think, ultimately came from one resident or two residents who are associated with people on the commission and the city commission.
And how did the, how did the Broward County Property Appraisers Office come to be involved in this, in this case?
So one of the people who was complaining is associated with the city commissioners, a couple of commissioners who she is very vocally supported, sent paperwork to the city clerk referring to my old property that I had moved out of in 2022. And then at some point in, I'm sorry, in 2021, in some point in 2022, they had called and asked when I moved. I was like, I moved several months ago, but I can get you a date if you send me an email. They never sent me an email. And so they just said that I moved in February, but that never came out of my mouth. I don't know where their investigator report got that. Maybe that's when the call was, in February of 2022. But that's how Property Appraiser was involved.
Okay, okay. Enough said. Jeremy, if you, if you want to add anything to what he's just said, the floor is open.
Again, I'm not questioning residencies. I think this has gone through the court system. And at this point, I'd prefer that the voters make, make the right decision.
Okay. I'm going to shift gears. And I had some interesting time watching videos of past Cooper City commission meetings, which I'll get to in a minute. But Jeremy, what's your overall assessment of Joseph Napoli? What kind of job is he doing as city manager?
I can say that in my interactions with Mr. Napoli, they've been generally positive. I have seen some things that I'd like to improve in the city and with the manager. I think, you know, number one, we, as a commissioner, I do pledge to use my skills in communication and board management to have a professional and collegial dialogue with all of the commissioners as well as a city manager and work with him in, you know, very professionally, but also hold him accountable. The residents expect that the commission holds a city manager accountable, which then holds the staff accountable. We have an incredible staff. I have great relationships with many of them. And that's one of the things that I think I bring to the table in this is that I am, I have positive relationships with people throughout the city because I'm incredibly involved in the city in various aspects.
What's an example of, of something that you'd like to, where's there room for improvement with, with the manager?
I think communication and records retention.
Okay. Josh, what's your overall assessment of the city manager's performance?
Honestly, there's a lot of things he does that I like, but in fairness to him, it's really hard to assess because he's consistently bullied by the commission. He's called incompetent in front of all his employees. He has staff leaving every other week. We have the highest employee turnover of any of the cities in Broward. And the most common answer on exit interviews is because of the commission. So anyone who's super friendly with the commission is going to be seen as another villain for Mr. Polcini. So the commission's going, people will think the commission's going to continue bullying employees. I think that if Mr. Napoli, the city clerk, the city attorney, if they're all given a chance to actually do their job and not consistently respond to emails for information requests from the commission, that they can all do a very good job. Napoli, Mr. Napoli came from another city that he was running very well. There have been things like deadlines missed for reports that is not solely at his feet. If the commission is forcing finance directors to leave left and right, it's hard to get a financial report done on time. So I am generally happy with the effort he puts in. I think everyone in the city, the staff there work way more hours than they should have to. But it's because of how the commission abuses them and asks for information dozens of times a day and keeps them responding to their emails instead of doing their jobs.
On the city commission at City Hall, you used the word bullying. Who does most of the bullying?
A lot of it would fall at Commissioner Schrader's feet. I do think he's very involved in just trying to do what's best for the city. But the city commission in Cooper City is not meant to work as a city manager. We're meant to oversee and we have what's called a weak mayor. So like, we're not supposed to be involved day to day as commissioners, which you know what's going on and find employment and make sure we're informed on the issues. But numerous requests a day to multiple employees every day for information just backs up the city's system and slows down the employees.
Jeremy, do you agree that the bullying goes on on the dais at city commissionings?
I've seen some things that I don't appreciate on the commission. And I think the fact that I am, you know, I have experience leading boards, not only locally, but statewide boards. I was the chair of the Public Relations Society of America for the entire state, for example, which is a communications organization. So I think the fact that I have the ability to communicate, to bring consensus, to work with people and to have positive relationships with all people, not just, not just some, will help me navigate that commission and, and help to alleviate some of the negativity that is occurring. I don't think adding more conflict to the commission is going to benefit the city or the commission.
Right. Has Mr. Schrader taken sides in your race?
He hasn't taken sides in my race officially, but I will say that he donated to my previous campaign for state representative.
I'd also like to add that when Mr. Katzman switched and made, and chose to run Cooper City because he no longer liked the districts for the state, he had to email all of his, his donators and inform them. And Mr. Schrader did not ask for a refund. So I think donating money to someone's campaign and leaving it there is as much an admission of who they're supporting as anything. Mr. Mr. Schrader's been aware that I'm running and he has not made a donation. So I think...
Well, you also ran against him two years ago, which they should know.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll, let's go back to this, Jeremy. I gotta say, I watched the July 26th city commission meeting in most of its entirety. And, you know, this is the editorial board of the Sun Sentinel. We are expected to have opinions. I was appalled by Commissioner Schrader's behavior. Absolutely appalling. Making motions to terminate the city manager, then making the motion to suspend the city manager. I, I, I don't know how up in arms the residents are of the community. That's why, I mean, obviously, it's a council manager form of government, obviously, right?
Yes.
So...
No, you're right. It was, I just admitted, I just said that that was not a positive thing. I don't control any of the commissioners. I don't agree with all of the things that they do. But if I get elected to the commission, which is my plan, I will need to work with these individuals to get positive laws passed for the community, right? So I need to gain consensus. So my way of doing this is to go up there and have a relationship with these individuals and be able to work with them on the dais in a positive, not a negative way. I do not agree with the way that some of the commissioners have talked to residents or have talked to members of the staff. So let me be clear about that. I'm not endorsing that activity. And I'd like to go back because Mr. Giancarlo did bring up my redesignation and said that I did not like the districts, which was incredibly inappropriate. I re-designated because I was redistricted, Cooper City was redistricted in the state legislature, as I'm sure you're aware. I was previously running for an open seat. And the current seat is occupied by Representative Michael Gottlieb, who is a friend, who is a strong legislator and is somebody that I'm not looking to remove from the legislature because he's doing great work for our community. He actually just brought us $400,000 for sewage on Friday. So the reason that I'm, I re-designated or I did not run for the state house seat is because I'm not looking to just get my name on an office. I'm looking to do good work and I'm not looking to displace people who are doing good work.
Jeremy, I'm sorry if you, like I said, I just felt you didn't like the district lines that were drawn because you had to run against somebody else. You didn't want to run against Mr. Gottlieb because of the redistricting line. I'm sorry that I didn't explain it as thoroughly as you, but I, I do not imply that you didn't like, I meant you didn't like this because you'd have to run against. But I also think it's, it's safe because Jeremy is a good person. I've known Jeremy for a few years now. To think you can have a good relationship with someone when they go ahead and berate city staff, the proper thing to do in that situation in July was to, who make a motion to censor Mr. Schrader because the behavior was unacceptable. And the reason I, I know Mr. Commissioner Green did not do so is because he didn't have the votes. Fact of the matter is, depending on that board, the votes may have been there. And the second someone gets censured, the idea of a friendly relationship with them is probably going out the window. So at what point do you sit there and let them walk all over people versus force them to stop? And are the people you're forcing to stop willing to forgive you if they admit you were, they were wrong? Which Mr. Schrader, I think is, or Commissioner Schrader is very firm in that he thinks what he does is right. So if you censure him for thinking what he does is right, I don't know that he's going to forgive you or that you could have a friendly relationship going forward.
Let me ask you a question, Joshua. I mean, if you're elected to the Cooper City City Commission, are you going to make or support a motion to censure Commissioner Schrader?
Based on his July actions, I don't think it'd be appropriate on my part. But if any commissioner sits there and berates and calls city employees incompetent and insults them, or even, or residents, which has occurred in the past, yes, if the motion is made, I would honestly, I would give someone a warning and say, look, I actually do think you should be. But in, in, since fairness, everyone gets, gets one chance with me and we'll go from there. But don't let, like, we cannot treat the city and residents and the staff as if they're beneath us. So I would support it if that kind of behavior was ongoing.
Okay. Jeremy, I wanted to ask you about something that was in your candidate questionnaire. And that is the use of license plate readers.
Yes.
In Cooper City. Explain that issue and explain what your concern is there.
So our community, Cooper City, has experienced some burglaries recently, both auto and home burglaries. And I've had, I attend a lot of the community meetings, HOAs, CDDs, for example, the commission meetings. And I hear a lot of the concern from the residents about burglaries. I'm in touch with the residents. I knock on doors. I hear public safety is the number one concern of our residents over and over and over again. Our commission in alignment with our amazing BSO captain, D. Giovanni, who represents our law enforcement, has created a proactive solution, which involves a, an emergency monitoring center, which is being built out along with license plate readers, which will only read license plates coming in and out of the city at the points where they're, where they're placed. And it scans them through the, the emergent, the national system. And if there is a flag on these, whether it's an amber alert, a silver alert, felon, stolen vehicle, whatever it is, they automatically get a flag to BSO within one or two seconds. And then the deputies are sent out to monitor the situation.
Does, are the license plate readers in use right now?
They're being put into use in the immediate future. They've been budgeted and they're being purchased.
Do these license plate readers, in your judgment, do they raise any sort of privacy or civil liberties concerns?
I think that the privacy and civil liberties concerns would be outweighed by the safety of the community. They're not, the records are not maintained of these license plates. They're not recording who lives, you know, who, who comes home at nine o'clock in the morning and who leaves at three in the afternoon. What they're doing is the, the system is using LED or laser scanners to identify the, the numbers on a plate, putting it through the system. If, if it flags it, they send it to the dispatch. If it doesn't, it just, they just move on. Nobody's using it to, for, for lack of a better, better word, infringe on people's rights.
Okay. Josh, let me bring you into this conversation. Tell us about the use of license plate readers as a public safety tool and whether it's really a good idea and a step forward for Cooper City.
So I do think any kind of information gathering is, is better. As far as privacy goes, you're on a public road. It really just saves you from having more police officers at the, at the entrance to each city. Knowing where people are can also work in their favor. If they know that they were in, let's, let's use a felon, for example. They drive into Cooper City. They're accused of a crime in Pembroke Pines. But the fact they were found in Cooper City actually helps them. So more information for the city and for law enforcement is better for everybody. I'm concerned about the improper use of that information. Just because someone enters the city regardless of their past, doesn't necessarily mean that there should be a, a police officer sent out to investigate them or pull them over. It's good to know that people, where people are, it's no different than when we track people who are committed of certain sexual offenses. It's good to know have information to where people are and make it easier, protect the city and the residents. But as long as their information is used properly, I think it's a good thing for the city.
Okay. And Jeremy, also, when the license plate reader program is launched, is there some sort of public notification system? Will motorists be made aware of the program?
You mean on the sign or where it's? I don't know, but I can certainly look into that with BSO and, and recommend that that is a, a good idea. And I know I mentioned convicted felons. What I meant was wanted individuals, B O L O, BOLO individuals, not formerly convicted felons. I mean, these are people who are actively accused or suspected of committing a crime.
Sorry, for, for cities that use it, they're currently, it's, some have signs and some do not. I know there are a few cities I've driven through that, I've seen the signs and some that I've driven through that I know have and don't have signs. So it's hit or miss.
Okay. Speaking of public safety, I mean, we've done a number of stories in the Sun Sentinel in the last year or so regarding the relationship between the city and the Broward Sheriff's Office. Cooper City's been a BSO contract city for, I think, for quite a while, for like 15 or 16 years. But our reporting reflects the fact that the mayor, Greg Ross, has, and others have had some serious concerns with the level of responsiveness by the sheriff's office. I know, Jeremy, you mentioned the captain there is, is, is well-liked and well-respected. But Jeremy, I'm going to ask you, what, what is your assessment of the relationship between the sheriff's office and the community?
Sure. So first of all, I would like to say that there is a, an overall respect and I have an overall respect for the public safety officers in our community, including law enforcement, including fire and rescue. I think that comes across the board from the city and, and the residents are appreciative. And I plan to stand by them. That's why I have the support of the, both the Police Benevolent Association and the IAFF, the firefighters, are supporting my race because they believe I'm the right candidate. Now, on the note of the relationship with BSO, I do believe there are some things to work on and I plan to facilitate a better relationship there. I do have a relationship with some members of BSO. I've met with the fire chief for hours. I've met with Captain D. Giovanni for hours and talked to them regularly about these issues. And I've read the contracts. I know the issues. And I'm looking to facilitate a better relationship. That's what I think I bring a lot to the table, again, is relationships, being able to find a consensus. And we need that because there is an animosity right now between, it's not local, it's the central BSO and the city.
Okay. Josh, have you, have you had meetings with Captain D. Giovanni?
I've spoken to him on a number of occasions. I've also spoken to members of the sheriff's staff and his board on a number of occasions and have a relationship with the, some higher level people with BSO. City residents, I think, appreciate BSO. But the city commission has created an untenable relation, a situation between them and BSO. They sit there and argue over the contract and all over the numbers, but they don't have an accounting background. They don't look at how the numbers are calculated, which is what I would bring. Because my issue with the BSO contract is how overhead is calculated, how overhead is allocated to the cities. The cost of BSO officers is something we don't, we don't want to cut BSO on the streets. We want all those officers there. So if we have an issue with the budget, we have to look at overhead. And Sheriff Tony wants the best trained officers, but we're paying for training that for options in Cooper City just isn't needed. They're paying for expenses that are allocated to the city, but that the city doesn't need. So I think I can improve the relationship by negotiating a fair price for the city, which is, with commission's concern, has been for the last several years, as well as working with them to get us exactly what we need and not extra.
Is, go ahead, yeah, sorry.
On, on that note, Joshua, in your, in your questionnaire, you, you wrote that you would ensure that first responders are properly equipped, trained, and allowed to follow best practices. Are you suggesting that currently first responders are in any way ill-equipped, untrained, or disallowed from following best practices? And what exactly would you change?
So there is some equipment that the, the fire department has been trying to get for a while now. I think the equipment we have now is sufficient or beats, meets the minimum requirements. But those things, those pieces of equipment are older and could break at any time. And they've been trying to, and the city has approved, but they've been searching and trying to find the best price, when really all things have done in the last years, prices have gone up. I believe it was the meeting in August where this was discussed. And the city tried to pretend that there was a savings by waiting, when really they switched to a cheaper vehicle that then cost more than it originally did. But also there was a brief discussion of going to two personnel on the ambulance during non-peak hours. And best practices is three. So I'll ensure that we continue to use best practices, which is three on the vehicle, and we make sure that they have all the proper equipment necessary. I believe they were even talking about having defibrillator machines with the, with the police vehicles. The city supported that as a means to help with efficiency. I'd support that also. But basically, I want to give our police and firefighters, our policemen and firefighters, the best chance to help all of our residents at all times.
You also said you keep the milage rate at the current rate by removing operational redundancies. Can you be a lot more specific there? What redundancies would you move?
There were two positions at the city that were added roles that overlap functions. I don't remember the staff official titles at this time, but we have openings in the city currently. And those positions are looking to be filled, but we can move people from jobs that have overlapping functions or adjust job descriptions so that we don't need to hire more staff to do the same job. Also, by streamlining commission requests, we can improve efficiency of staff and reduce the need for more staff.
Okay. Jeremy, I'll come back to you in just one second. But just as a point of clarification, Joshua, if you could, on, on Jeremy's questionnaire, he also mentioned the advisory boards and planning and zoning that he's sat on all. You mentioned you sit on three different city advisory boards. Could you just, for the record, say which ones?
I sat on different advisory boards. I sat on the charter review board, the financial, the finance advisory board. And I was actually on the planning and zoning board for a period of time with Mr. Katzman. There was a one board at a time limit. And then after the 2020 election, I actually lost my seat on the board and was replaced because a new person took the commission, they put in their own people.
Okay. Jeremy, is Joshua right? I think I heard him correctly. Cooper City has the highest staff turnover rate of any community in Broward County?
I don't know if it's the highest turnover rate. I haven't seen that data, but I know that we do have a very high turnover rate. And I, that's something that I am looking to work with as well. I think part of my experience, again, that I bring to the table, I work in business. I'm a healthcare, or I'm an administrator at Nova Southeastern University. And one of the things I do is I help at an administrative level, work on staffing, work on organizational structure. I have an MBA in that area in management. So I can bring all of those elements to the table. And I understand organizational culture. So that's something that I'd like to really dig into if I'm a member of the commission. And, you know, I would also like to, if it's okay, go back and say that, you know, going back to the public safety discussion, you know, I also am a strong supporter of three on a rescue. I have never said anything otherwise. And again, I'm the candidate who has the support of both law enforcement and fire as an organization.
Okay.
I'd like to address a couple of other things. Actually, Mr. Katzman said something of, I'll support whatever research that dictates is the best. So he doesn't actually say he supports, he says he supports whatever the research says, which right now is three, but that could theoretically change. Further, I believe he had the endorsement of both of those unions prior to my qualifying period.
That's, that's incorrect.
And was also never even interviewed for that position because he was interviewed while he was running for state. So they, they made, they made endorsements, but they didn't gather all the information when that endorsement was made.
That's incorrect. I received the firefighters endorsement after. I did receive the PBA endorsement prior and they, they reached out again and I was given their endorsement because they thought I was the best candidate.
Josh, hold on, hold on. Josh, let me ask you a question. Before the PBA and before the IAFF made endorsements in this race, did you have an opportunity to sit with and be interviewed by those two unions?
No, I did not.
Jeremy Katzman, you didn't just fall off a turnip truck and Dan Sweeney and I didn't either. We've been watching Broward politics for a long time. And I'm bringing this up because it's come up in a, in a couple of other races. Why are, why are public employee unions endorsing candidates without interviewing every candidate in the race?
I don't speak on behalf of those unions, but I will say that I actively reached out. So to me, I'm, I'm somebody who was, you know, raised in a very low socioeconomic status with a single mother. I didn't ever have anything fed to me or given to me. I pick up the phone when I need something or when I, when I'm trying to make a difference and I take an opportunity and I say, I would like to speak with you. Can we talk about the issues that are important to you? What is your endorsement process? I'd like to interview. And I've had a relationship with these organizations for several years. And, you know, I think in my case, they were very comfortable supporting me because they know I'm the best candidate for the commission.
Let's talk about something else. So, you know, when you and I met last year a couple of times... Let's talk about something else. So, you know, when you and I met last year a couple of times, you were at that time a candidate for the Florida House. Is it, is it still your desire, your long-range goal to be in the Florida Legislature?
It's not. I can tell you honestly, I am really excited about the position in Cooper City to serve as a commissioner. I have a young family with two young children, a wife who works in the public school. All, they're all less than a mile from me right now. I'm part of this community. I've been an active member of this community. So this is my, this is my plan. I am very excited to be serving Cooper City. I also would like to talk about board membership because you asked, one of you asked about that a little earlier. I've been on the planning and zoning board for almost four years now and I've never missed a meeting. I think that's very important because I think when you volunteer to do something, you should show up. And I think that that says a lot. I've also made an impact on that. And prior to that, immediately prior to that, I was on the education advisory board for approximately two years, which goes right into why I'm running is serving the community, education, public safety, you know, small business support and keeping Cooper City someplace special.
Okay. Josh, go ahead. The other four.
So a few things were touched on there, involvement in the community. I've been volunteering with the largest nonprofit in Cooper City since I was 16 years old, so almost 20 years now. I was a family of five children. I stayed at home mom for a while. Dad was a teacher. Then both parents were teaching, so I can completely understand doing things yourself and getting things done. That's why I put myself through law school, put myself through my masters in accounting. I want something done right. I do it myself. That's why I help run the basketball program in Cooper City, which to my knowledge is the largest recreational basketball program in South Florida. I'm an integral part in running that league in both the summer and fall. Education is the most important thing and that's the thing I got most out of Cooper City growing up as a child. That's why I coached at the Cooper City High School for the girls' basketball team. I teach a legal studies class at David Pozneck Day School across the street from Cooper City. I put my time in to organizations all throughout the city and right nearby to try and make the city some, or keep the city someplace special. Not only do I put that time in, but I work with other programs to help do the same.
Okay. What's, what's the largest nonprofit you're involved in?
Cooper City Optimist.
Right, okay.
Thousands of kids in multiple sports, nine hundred in basketball, over twelve hundred in soccer, seven or eight hundred in baseball, softball, travel soccer programs all over. I've helped with scheduling for almost all of those sports, coached in almost all of them.
Okay. Jeremy, I wanted to ask you with your work, you work in business development at Nova Southeastern University. Does, does, you know, we can't be there for every city commission discussion on every issue. Does Cooper, does the city of Cooper City have business relationships with Nova University? And would there be any sort of, you know, potential for you as a city commissioner to be voting on issues that affect your employer?
I can't imagine an incident in a situation where I would be having, being conflicted out. I will say that the university does have an organization or a a public sector partnership where they offer educational benefits to municipalities and other governmental entities. I do work on some of that and I specifically have kept myself out of the Cooper City relationship.
Okay. How long have you worked for Nova?
Nine years.
Okay. I gotta say that I'm mindful of the clock here and you're both, you're both well-prepared candidates and you both express a great concern for this community. And Jeremy, I was so distressed by Ryan Schrader's behavior. And that's only one commission meeting. I haven't had the opportunity to look at a hundred city commission meetings. He is a, he is not a force for good on that city commission. And so it's a little bit of a source of concern to us that, you know, that I know you've said you'd be an independent voice, but as your opponent has pointed out, he's donated to you. So I'd like you to tell us a little bit more about your relationship with Ryan Schrader.
Sure. But can I also talk about, you know, you're talking about my donations. People make a contribution to your campaign, you know, because they think you're the best candidate. And I've received approximately a hundred different donations from Cooper City residents. So keep that into your perspective here, okay?
Absolutely. Sure.
Yes. Has he contributed to my campaign? He has. I, it was when I was running for state representative, I asked all of the donors if they wanted their, you know, followed the state process, sent them the form. I think five or six out of almost 500 people asked for their money back. So he was one of the people who did not. He, you know, he donated to my campaign. I'm not saying that he didn't. But I will also say that I have relationships with people all throughout the state. I'm endorsed by our local county commissioner, by our local state senator, by our local state representative, by several past commissioners and mayors in the city, by the property appraiser, but school board members, the list goes on. And what, what does that mean? It means that I bring relationships to the table. I know how to get things done and people like me. If I see something that I don't like happening, I will absolutely address it. And I can tell you that I pick up the phone because I'm allowed to. I'm not on sunshine law right now. I'm allowed to pick up the phone and call commissioners if I don't like something they do. And let me tell you, I've done that. I'm not going to reveal private conversations, but when I see something that I don't believe in or when, or that I think is inappropriate, I pick up the phone and I call the person and I say, I don't like the way that you handled that. Here, here's what I recommend that you do. Now, they may not always listen to me. I don't, I can't control what other people decide to do. But I have had conversations regarding inappropriate behavior on the dais.
Okay. Well, great. Thanks for telling us that and walking us through that. Who's the school board member whose endorsement you have?
I have the endorsement of Debbie Hickson, Sarah Leonardi, Nora Rupert. I also have the endorsements of multiple past members like Lori Parish, Karen Fortman.
Okay.
I'm not thinking of all of them right now, but
We're getting a little bit far afield from Cooper City City Hall, but was, was it the right decision for Governor Ron DeSantis to suspend four school board members over that grand jury report?
I, I certainly, yeah, you, this is, I will say that I
Pardon for the interruption. Obviously, your constituents have kids in the Broward County school system and and your spouse works
My wife is in the Broward County I absolutely believe in the safety of our, our community. I don't agree with all of the things that the school board members did. I think we, we are in a very difficult situation where the governor made a decision to remove this four elected school board members. We currently have an appointed school board majority, which is, I think, a real detriment to our community. The vote, the will of the people is no longer taken on our school board. Hopefully in November that changes. And I know that I won't be supporting anybody who was named in the grand jury report.
Okay. Josh, what's your opinion about the governor's actions there?
Well, first off, I'd just like to address that last part about the donations. People make donations for two reasons. One, because they like the person, or two, because they think they're going to get what they want out of the person. I'm sure a number of Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Kathman's contributors are just good, honest people. But I assure you, some of them are also because they think that they're going to get more out of Jeremy, what they want out of Jeremy as opposed to what they want out of someone else. As far as the school board, I'm not going to be wishy-washy. I don't, I'm not for suspensions for something that occurred four years, five years prior. I think that the amount of control that the school board commissioners have over the incidents, day-to-day incidents at a school are very limited. I think a lot of people were taken to task. A lot of those people have actually been reelected since that happened. At the point that they've been reelected since that happened, I think the constituents, the residents who voted for them knew they were on the school board when, when that awful incident occurred. But to go and suspend people and to put a whole new board in wreaks of politicism and at the cost of this community's education.
Okay. Dan, any additional questions?
Yeah, just, just one or, one or two before we, you know, thank you all for your time. Jeremy, you, you wrote in your questionnaire that you would reduce unnecessary restrictions that hinder our local businesses' ability to succeed. Can you be more specific? What restrictions on local businesses right now would you remove if you were on the commission?
Yeah, sure. There's actually a situation right now that's going on. So I mentioned that I'm on the planning and zoning board. And I've been an active member and I've brought things to the table in that group. One of the things that I, that was addressed that I brought to the table were responsible for code ordinance changes or recommendations to the commission in addition to development. So one of the changes that came to us was business signs, the decal on the window. Currently, there's a code that requires a, it has to be less than 25% of the window space. It can only be two colors unless it is a registered trademark. And separately, there's an issue with holiday signs or holiday decorations that can only be shown in between the months of late October and early January. So those two issues, I had, I had a problem with those. Number one, most of the businesses in Cooper City are not following those and would be receiving code violations. You know, our goal as a commission is to support our local businesses, which then support our residents and support our tax base. So I think putting unnecessary restrictions like that on, on our businesses is the wrong way to support them, especially when we have vacancies in some of our shopping centers. So I, I worked to get the buy-in from the entire planning and zoning board. Unanimous vote on both of these issues to remove the color restrictions and work on some of the sizes as well as changing the holiday restrictions because I thought that was non-inclusive for the city.
Okay. In in Joshua's questionnaire, yeah, you mentioned that you would that the city needs to stop delaying annual city maintenance, which is going to result in higher costs over time. The question for both of you, well, first off, Jeremy, do you agree with the assessment that the city has been putting off annual maintenance? That, you know, some of the basic functions of city government, such as, you know, potholes in the road and that sort of thing, that are being just left out there to deal with later. And for both of you, what would you do to, to address the issue? Joshua, since you brought it up in your questionnaire, I'll start with you.
First, I'd just like to address real quick the code ordinance issue. I actually referenced in my questionnaire too, my legal background will help us. That code has been due to be rewritten for years and it's something that P N Z is working through. City commission didn't even accept P N Z's recommendation as it was. But the P N Z needs to be rewritten. This commission needs to make sure it's worded appropriately and reasonably so the businesses can operate without breaking the rules. So I think that's one of the things that my legal education experience will be, would be integral to assisting with regards to city maintenance. They have pushed things down because the most important thing to them for the past four years was lowering millage. They were willing to get rid of sidewalk repairs at the city level to reduce millage this year. But they brought it to other cities, don't pay for it. Cooper City is known for their trees. Our logo has a tree on it. We have a huge issue with roots, whether it's in Embassy Lakes or Rock Creek, soon to be Montera, because as that community ages, the trees will grow. Sidewalks are cracked all the way down 106 and 116. Soon it's going to damage roads. They've been pushing those things to artificially keep millage low. The important thing is we have a schedule. We need to budget to keep the schedule. So if portions of the city are supposed to be repaved or sidewalks are repaired, that needs to happen. We need to make sure we get good contracts, go through the bidding system and get good rates to make these repairs and then keep them up in line so that the damage doesn't get worse.
And Jeremy, do you, do you agree that, that maintenance costs have just been deferred for, for years now?
I think some of them have. I can say that some of the issues are being resolved as we speak. For example, we have a turf, we have several turf fields at our Flamingo West Park. The commission recently budgeted to put in reserves money because every, I believe, 10 years or so, you need to re-turf and update the materials. So they're, they're saving money every year. So that will happen. I do agree that some of our sidewalks are in need of repair and the commission needs to prioritize this in the budget. Our trees are, unfortunately, we used, we, as in the city, used to plant or require the planting of certain types of trees, like oak trees that do major damage. I mean, I can tell you my sidewalks have been, and my roads in front of my house have been damaged. We've since had our commission change the rules, working with an arborist, to require larger swales if you're going to plant those kinds of trees and recommend the types of trees that residents should be planting that are less invasive and less destructive to the infrastructure. I also will say that the half cent penny or half penny cent tax, you know, that represents transportation in, in the county has allocated a project to repair between, on Sterling between Flamingo and I believe Palm roads, and that came to the planning and zoning board. We had to approve that project. And one of the things that we'll deal with is, are the potholes and things as well as flooding that we're experiencing. So these issues are being addressed. It's not that they're being ignored, but I do think that we need to be focusing more on on some of the infrastructure and making sure sidewalks, for example, and, and street repair are budgeted.
If you've got to choose between, between lowering millage and fixing the sidewalks, what do you pick?
I don't think it has to be an either or. I think we can look at other things that we can cut that are, that may not be. You know, we're talking about redundancies here, evaluating redundancies, looking at different options that, that, that could be cut. I also think, you know, this year we, we made major infrastructure changes through ARPA. The past two years, we received about $18 million from ARPA. So what that did was give the city opportunities. We have a wastewater project coming up that's going to be four and a half million dollars in the next budget that was budgeted through ARPA. We have different elements like that, so that can offset the, the millage rates.
Look, if you, I'm going to actually answer the question. If you have to choose between one or the other, I'm going to update the sidewalks because if you don't update the sidewalks, they get worse. It costs more to fix them later. And it increases the chance of, of safety issues for kids biking up and down the sidewalks, walking to school, walking home, walking from their friend's house, and that creates losses which cost even more money. So if you have to choose between the two, we need to look at adjusting the millage. The cost of the millage when to fix sidewalks is nominal. But further, Mr. Kathman brought up funding. This commission has used money from COVID funds. They've used money from hurricane readiness that we received back to balance their budget and keep their millage low. This millage rate is, cannot be maintained. It's, it's just too low. I want it as low as possible like everybody else, but we talk about the project, they're being done now because we got free money. They lowered their budget hoping to get the free money and they were lucky they got it, but that's not going to be an option next year. There's not going to be, the government's not going to hand out trillions of dollars to municipalities every single year. So we need to do what's right when we're supposed to do it to try and keep costs down and keep the city how it needs to be.
Jeremy, is Joshua right? Is there a day of reckoning coming with the fiscal, the way the fiscal?
I will say that I'm concerned about future budgets. I, I believe, like, like I mentioned and like Josh just said, that we have we've been offsetting certain costs and I would budget for sidewalk repair. That was never a, a non-answer. I absolutely believe in sidewalk and street repair because I, my kids, you know, other people's kids are riding their bikes on the sidewalk. And, and we don't want them to get hurt. So that is not a question. I just am saying that we can offset it with other things.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, Dan or I, and Dan and I might have follow-up questions to ask one or both of you prior to making an endorsement in this race and we invite you to provide us with any additional information you think is relevant. We haven't covered everything we'd like to have covered, but we've taken almost an hour here. What kind of opportunities have there been for the two of you to debate or to have a joint appearance in front of a civic organization and so forth? And to express your views to voters? Josh?
There's been nothing that's occurred yet. I think there's some stuff that we've been reaching out to that will possibly taking place in the near future, but this would, will have been the first time.
So this, this discussion we're having right now is the first time you've been together talking about the issues?
Jeremy and I actually have a very good relationship. That's one of the reasons I actually waited to announce ultimately. I had planned, once they redistricted, I'd actually had a commission, a conversation with former and current commissioner, a current commissioner and former commissioners about my intent to run back in November of 21. Once they were talking about the redistricting. And when Jeremy decided to switch races, I have the utmost respect for Jeremy. The ultimate factor that I felt I still needed to run was his friendliness with certain members of the commission. Like Jeremy has said, he's tries to be friendly with everybody. Jeremy and I, I think are friendly. Me and Jeremy have had great conversations before. And we, I think, think the same on a number of issues.
All right.
We've spoken, but not on a public forum.
I do have one last question.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead. Sure. Yeah.
Thanks. So, you know, you talked about opportunities to meet voters. I don't, I, I mentioned this earlier. And I'm, I'm going to reinforce what I said. I don't wait for opportunities. I knock on doors. I've knocked on over a thousand doors in Cooper City and met residents and asked them, what do they care about? What, what concerns do they have? And how can I help as a commissioner? So to me, it's, you know, have we had a forum together? Not necessarily. But I'm taking the opportunity to meet as many voters and residents as I can.
Sure, understand. I understand that completely. Yeah. You know, Mr. Giancarlo had one hand tied behind his back when this campaign started. He had the entire legal apparatus of Cooper City against him, trying to force him off the ballot. And the fact that he persisted and prevailed and was a pro se litigant, I think, you know, I'm going to give him some points for that. I just wanted to mention that to you, Jeremy, and just say, say that I think that's, a lot of people think you can't fight City Hall. And you know, the, the legal issues of the redistricting and the residency requirement are what they are, but if I'm not mistaken, both the circuit judge and the fourth DCA ruled in Giancarlo's
That's not correct.
They withdrew their appeal to the fourth DCA because at the initial meeting where they voted for it, they didn't follow sunshine law and didn't give me a chance to speak on the matter. And then after the fact, I filed for an injunction that would have gone to the fourth DCA to hold up the process that I could have my chance to speak. So not only did I beat them at Circuit Court, I also ensured the rights of constituents to speak on issues that the city unintentionally ignored.
Okay.
And can I, can I just elaborate on the, on the legal issue? And Josh admitted this publicly. So Josh, correct me if I'm wrong. The city, per the ordinance, if there is reliable suspicion, which most people would agree there was reliable suspicion based on the documents that were submitted of someone's residency, the city clerk is required by city ordinance to file an action with the court. Therefore, the city was not, the commission didn't decide this either. It was the city clerk in consultation with the city manager and the city attorney, which was also stated in the minutes of a Cooper City meeting. And also I was, my incident or my case of residency was also requested for review, view, through a legal memo, which was issued by city attorney Horowitz because it impacted if the house is in one location and the district is drawn around it, does it also exist as a, as a district? I, you know, I, I can't say that I was taken to court by the city, but I can also say that the city I believe was doing its due diligence and it was done in court.
The city, the city did file after being pressured by the commissioners, as was told to me by both the city manager and the city attorney. But when they did call me, I was okay with the matter because it is, what's important is always what's best for the city, not what's best for me. Not what's best for Mr. Kathman or Mayor Ross or Commissioner Schrader. It's always what's best for the city. And if I'm elected, it'll always be like that.
Okay. I do have one last question. I'm going to start with Jeremy Katzman. And that's the, my question, Jeremy, is about the ballot, the charter amendment, some, also on this November ballot, which would eliminate single-member districts and return to an at-large voting system in Cooper City. Yes or no?
No. I, I like the way we had it before, which was single-member districts who were voted on by the entire city. We are in a situation now where the, where we're looking at just a variety of different options being voted on where every commissioner could live anywhere. What I would like to go back to is, and I would put on the charter review board and on an agenda, if I'm elected to commission, is to go back to single-member districts that are voted on by the entire city. Because I feel like most voters only have, have input on two of the five people who sit on their commission, which is not in a small city like ours where the issues are similar on north, northeast, west and south. I think we should all have a say on who sits on that commission.
Josh, what's your opinion?
I would keep it the way it is. This was an issue brought on the 2020 charter. I was on the charter review board. It was discussed at multiple meetings. There was an, there was, there was no reason for an inconsistency. If it's a single, if you have to live in the district to be the commissioner, it doesn't make sense that voting citywide, it's an inconsistency that almost no other city in Broward has. I want to say none, but just in case I'm wrong, there might be one other. But also, in 2020, we had an issue where one candidate basically bought an election. You couldn't really go door to door because of COVID, which was hopefully a one-time thing, but spent 70,000 of his own, own dollars in addition to money raised from, from friends, which was a lot of large donations from a few constituents and some non-resident constituents to buy an election, had TV ads, had all the billboards that are in the city. By keeping it single-member, say only to vote in your district, we give every commissioner a chance to knock on doors and to actually make sure that people voting know the issue. Also, people bring up that you're only voting for two out of the five. Well, look at the four commissioners. You're voting for one of them, but your vote is worth four times more because there's a quarter of the voters. Voting for one person where your vote matters four times as much as the same as voting for four where it matters a quarter of the amount. So your voting power isn't really hurt at all. You have more say in person who represents your district. So I'm for that. I would like to keep it the way it is.
So if I, if I heard the explanations correctly, you, you're both opposed to this charter amendment, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, yep. Okay. Alright. Okay. Josh, Jeremy, thanks a lot for the time. Appreciate your responsiveness to the questions. You came prepared this morning. We appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
You, Dan, thanks for all your time. Jeremy, thanks for taking time and best of luck.
Thanks you too.
Thanks guys.